Got to get all the cues all lined up. Okay, I have just got the thumbs up from Jeff. So, good evening, everyone. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Pitt County Board of Education to order. Due to COVID-19, we are having our meeting virtually to protect everyone involved pursuant to our policy 2300. An official meeting of our board includes any meeting, assembly, or gathering together at any time or place, or the simultaneous communication by conference telephone or other electronic means by a majority of the members of the board. For the purpose of conducting hearings, participating in deliberations, or voting upon or otherwise transacting the public business of the public body. With the full board present in person or via Zoom, we consider tonight's meeting to be an official meeting in which we have a quorum of the board present to conduct official business. We appreciate the members of the public joining us for the live stream of this meeting. Of course, we miss having you in person and then present with us, but we do look forward to welcoming you all back by the end of this pandemic. So, I would like to go ahead and call roll, just to confirm that we have everyone present in a quorum in order. So, I will start alphabetically by first name of board member. Anna Barrett Smith.
I'm here.
Amy Cole.
Here.
Benji Forrest.
Here.
Caroline Darty. Caroline, are you present?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we have you. Thank you.
Here.
Mary Blunt Williams.
Here.
Melinda Fagundis.
Here.
Tracy Everett-Lenz.
Here.
And Worth Forbes.
Here.
Okay, so we have everyone present and we do have a quorum. At this time, I will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you will, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Well, that was a wonderful ringing of the Pledge of Allegiance. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Caroline Darty, who will lead us in our moment of silence.
Thank you, Beth Dee. As we share a moment of silence together, I ask you to consider all of Pitt County school staff, students, and families facing very challenging situations now, including disrupted learning, separation from classmates and teachers, missed prom, competitions, games, and celebrations, hunger and financial losses, personal safety and health, and loss of beloved family members. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. At this time, are there any adjustments to the agenda? And Carol, can you just unmute everyone, so if anyone has any adjustments to the agenda, they can just speak up? Okay, hearing no adjustments. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
I have a motion by Melinda to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second, this is Amy.
Okay, it's been moved by Melinda and seconded by Amy Cole. Please respond when I call your name with a yes or a no. Anna Barrett Smith.
Yes.
Amy Cole.
Yes.
Benji Forrest.
Yes.
Caroline Darty.
Yes.
Mary Blunt Williams.
Yes.
Melinda Fagundis.
Yes.
Tracy Everett-Lenz.
Yes.
And Worth Forbes.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. For this month's meeting, we did allow public expression via email only. Ms. Rankin, was there any public expression received for this meeting?
No, we did not receive any.
Okay, there was no public expression received. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Board members were given the opportunity to review the items on the consent agenda prior to this meeting. At this time, I will pull the board members concerning the consent agenda and ask for a motion and a second. Can I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
A motion that we approve the consent items.
Okay, I have a motion by Melinda to approve the consent items. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Worth. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Anna Barrett Smith.
Yes.
Amy Cole.
Yes.
Benji Forrest.
Yes.
Caroline Darty.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mary Blunt Williams.
Yes.
Melinda Fagundis.
Yes.
Tracy Everett-Lenz.
Yes.
And Worth Forbes.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion to approve our consent agenda passes unanimously. At this point, we are going to have an update on COVID-19 that will begin with Dr. Linker. Oh, by the way, board members, before Dr. Linker gets going, I think he's going to have different members of his staff that will make presentations on different areas related to COVID-19. And I will pull the board members at the end of each content area to see if you all have any questions or comments.
You are unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Just quickly, over the weekend and last week, you saw the General Assembly was in Raleigh working on the COVID relief bill that was approved or finalized on Saturday. I just want to share a few quick things. I think you can see there that a little over $231 million was put into the K-12 fund. And there you can see child nutrition, $75 million, summer learning, $70 million, remote learning, up to $56.5 million. Exceptional children, student health, and cybersecurity make up the rest of that. So, you can see that money there. We have not received that money. We haven't gotten any guidance on how that will be divided out, but just so you know, that money has been done, put out there by the General Assembly. And as soon as we get some guidance on that, we will bring that. Of course, Deborah, we'll have to run that through the budget process, but we'll bring that back to the board over the next several weeks or months. Lastly, what you saw also was the calendar revision. What the General Assembly has done is basically said, take the calendar you have scheduled for next year, which in our case was 178 days, or 1,025 hours. We have to then add, as you see there, five remote instruction days, then also five face-to-face instruction days. So, we're adding five days to the calendar. We will then also add some remote instruction days. The five days of the calendar are added at the beginning of the calendar. So, if you look at the second bullet, basically, all of our schools are going to start August 17th this fall, instead of August 24th. That's what the original calendar was. All right, going through the calendar some today, at this point, we don't even have five teacher workdays in the middle of the year, except if you count Christmas vacation for remote learning. So, we're going to have to do a little work on those days. We will get some teachers and principals to help us organize that calendar with how many days we want before school, before school would start, and how many days we need after school, and try to put all the workdays throughout the calendar. If you do notice, it says those remote instruction days can be a teacher workday. Actually, it almost has to be to make it work out. Because what the General Assembly did in adding this, did not add any days to the calendar. So, we had 215 days calendar. We've added five instructional, remote instructional days and five face-to-face instructional days. So, that part has not changed. Still have 215. We just have to change the teacher workdays. That information will be coming back, too. You'll probably be hearing about that from lots of people, what that might look like. And at this point, we're not sure yet. Dr. Lassiter and I have had some questions on it, but we will pull together some things to get that back to the board, hopefully, at our work session.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Madam Chairman?
Are there any questions from members of the board at this time? Carol, is everyone still muted?
Yeah, I'm going to unmute them.
Okay, so we're just going to unmute everyone? I hope this is safe. Let me know when everyone's unmuted.
I've got a question.
Oh, Worth is unmuted. Go ahead, Worth.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Linker, again, explain to me the, you see, five remote instructional days. And what are those five days that are added at the beginning of the calendar?
They are five face-to-face days added at the beginning of the calendar, just basically as a jumpstart or kickstart to the school year. So, there's actually five more instructional days for the students, and then five additional remote instructional days for the students. But there is also a, we haven't gotten into that on this, today, but there's a 13-point plan we have to follow on how to organize our remote instruction days that Dr. Lassiter and his team will be working on over the next two months.
Okay. Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Forrest, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Benji. Oh, Dr. Linker.
Yes, sir.
If, if, if they want us to have five remote instruction days, then how can we turn around and use five, the same five remote instruction days? Because it says it may, may be scheduled to use as teacher workdays. How do you do both?
Well, basically, the remote instruction day would be on a teacher workday, the best I can tell by reading the document. So, that means when we have like some staff development or some professional development days built into the calendar for the teachers, the students would have a, the teachers would have already prepared this, and the students would either have a packet to take home or be able to log on from home and, and do a virtual day, that, you know, virtual lesson that day.
But, but if, if they've got a teacher workday, how does the teacher engage the student electronically?
There may not be actual engagement that day. Because if you dig deeper into the actual, if you actually dig deeper into the law, and what I said was, there may not be actual engagement. Because if you actually dig deeper, it even says the teachers can take leave on that day. We've still, we've got a lot of things to put together, and we'll obviously, we'll create the best plan around. And we'll put it to, and our teachers will do the best job of everyone else.
Uh-huh.
I don't think you believe me.
I believe you.
Any more questions on that part?
Dr. Linker, I just have one quick question. In our calendar for next school year, how many days did we have built into that calendar?
We had 100, we had 213, 178 student days, and then 15, 15 teacher workdays, 10 holidays. 215, so.
So, there were 215 days in the calendar that we had.
Right.
This new, the changes to this calendar that the General Assembly is saying needs to happen is also 215 days.
Correct.
So, we're going to basically start earlier and we'll use up.
Teacher workdays.
We'll find some days during the year that we'll have to have some sort of instruction.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Go ahead.
All right, and then one more slide, just on the school resource officers. You remember, a couple of years ago, we had a state grant, two-to-one matching grant. We received $466,000 from the state. We've talked about this a couple of times, just put it back out there. I finally was able to get some, someone from DPI to tell us that that, the application for that grant should be coming out this week or next week, and applications should be finalized and people should be notified before the end of June. Now, keep in mind, we have 12 resource officers who are tied to this grant. So, that means we have 12 people who are hoping we have jobs because of this grant. Now, I will remind everyone that the funds from this grant were continuing two years ago, so the money is in the budget. There's no reason to think we won't get it, but we also still have to apply for it and hopefully get it.
Are there any questions related to SRO, the SRO presentation? Okay.
The only thing, Madam Chairman, that, that concerns me is that I am sure that our SROs, or some of the SROs, are very aware about the way this grant has not, we have not been informed yet about receiving it or being able to receive it or when it will be received. And my, my only reflection on that is that I hope it just doesn't create some frustration on their part until we actually know when the state will provide the funding for it.
Yeah. I agree, Mr. Forrest.
Yeah, thank you, Benji. That's important to note. And I know Benji has tried to reach out to several of our state legislators to try to push that through. Benji, have you heard back from them?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay.
They were going to use it, the way I understood it, Madam Chair, was that they, they were going to ask the question during that emergency Senate meeting that they had last Friday. But asking the question and getting a response, I think, are two different things as far as what transpired that day.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Linker. When do we have to have those contracts for SROs put together?
Ms. Hudson's working on them now.
Okay.
And they're, they're well aware of this is a grant funded positions and obviously concerned about it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Lassiter is coming to the podium now for his presentation.
Okay. Good evening to our board members. I will be brief and just share with you, just to start with a bit of data. I believe the board did request the student engagement data from our students participating in our weekly remote learning experience. So, we have the chart up. So, we have the chart up, and just to show that first week, if you look, elementary, middle, and high school, the total data in the engaged and not engaged.
You are muted. You are unmuted.
The total data in the engaged and not engaged column should equal 100%, but in that first week, in terms of implementing remote learning, you'll notice across elementary, middle, and high school that that total does not equal 100% as we were still working with schools to collect data. And then we had some schools who had some challenges that first week, having some COVID and coronavirus outbreaks. So, the data there is not 100% in that first week for elementary, middle, and high schools. Just to point out, our key here is our paper packets. P is for paper packet. V is for virtual. B is for both paper and virtual. And then totaling the P, the V, and the B columns equal the number or the percentage of students who were engaged. And then the not E is not engaged. So, if you look at the first week, we had 64% of our elementary students who were engaged and 34% who were not. As we enter into week two, that percentage increased, and as you see, has pretty much remained steady throughout elementary. Well, we have the majority of our elementary students continuing to be engaged with our remote learning experience. So, just again, to explain that key again, P is the, if the student just picked up the paper packet. The V is if they participated virtually through Canvas, and B is if they participated in both paper and virtual. We made sure that principals understood to just count them once. So, if they participated in paper packet and virtual, that's the column that they went in, and we used a uniform definition of being engaged across the district. When you look at our middle school numbers, those numbers, again, that first week are a little bit skewed there. However, as we got a handle of the experience, week two, 70% were engaged. Week three, 78%. And last week, 75% were engaged, and 25% of our middle school students were not engaged. This week is week five. Just wanted to make sure there. And then when you look at our high school numbers and looking at those trends, that first week, 82% were engaged. 81% the following week, 80% in week three. And then, as you can see, there was a tremendous decline in high school participation. And in week four, the Department of Public Instruction released information regarding grades. And so, we did see a decrease in student participation for our high school students. So, we do know, and we, as you can see, we do have a number of our students engaging in the remote learning experience. And actually, the department is quite excited to venture in tweaking our process for remote learning for next school year. So, as Dr. Linker shared, we are in that planning process starting Friday. We are meeting to begin planning what virtual remote learning will look like for Pitt County schools. And certainly, we'll bring that plan to the board and share that with the board to ensure that we're engaging all of our students. And we'll continue to collect data in some fashion. I'll do that in partnership with Kay Weddington, our attendance coordinator, because much of that data will come through Power School as the state law says that we'll have to track those students who are participating virtually. So, we'll make sure that we, we have that and work together with Kay Weddington. All right, in regards to what the final recommendations from DPI on grades and student promotion, we have, we now have final information from the Department of Public Instruction. We are waiting on one additional piece of information that should be released tomorrow. And I'll go through this, and you are certainly welcome to ask questions. I'll clarify. We created this document to be a crosswalk for Pitt County schools, just to make sure that whatever the DPI policy is or what their recommendation is, this is how we're going to communicate that through Pitt County schools to our principals and to our parents and to any other stakeholders who may have a interest. So, the frequently asked questions, end-of-year grading and promotion, these were approved by the State Board of Education. And so, we're going to implement these recommendations as for final grades. In grades K-5, the department, on the left, is Department of Public Instruction. They said students will not receive a final grade. Those teachers will provide year-end written feedback for students and families based on learning this school year, and the school district leaders will decide what that format is. And then the academic and social, emotional feedback will be used to help transition students into the new school year. So, there are actually two things that has to happen for K-5. There has to be a feedback document, and then there has to be a social and emotional document. The Department of Public Instruction is recommending that they be two separate documents. However, they are leaving it to LEAs to create, create it in the fashion that they choose. We are opting to choose one document, because we do feel like that although the teachers will provide end-of-year feedback to families, the academic and social feedback, social, emotional feedback will go, is supposed to be transitioned to the teachers so that they can understand the needs of the students. So, Karen Harrington, Doris Rankins, Lisa Tate, our new director of secondary, who I believe is on this call as well, and Preston Bowers, we're going to work together with them to come up with indicators regarding social and emotional learning feedback. And we're going to put that into one document, because we think it's important for parents to see from the school perspective, what are the social and emotional needs that their student, that their child may have. So, we're going to have that in one document for our K-5 students. So, what we've done is, we met today, Mrs. Tate, Mrs. Mann, and Mr. Bowers had already created this document already. We are working with Student Services, Karen Harrington, and our NTSS coordinator. They are working tomorrow to finalize this document, to ensure that we are aligning it with social and emotional feedback. And that will, document will also be given to principals to review and to look at and to provide feedback. It will hopefully be finalized by, and I would say in the next few days, we'll have a final document. And the feedback form, all of that will be given to the parent and also placed in the CUME folder of that elementary student. And then teachers should begin writing feedback and entering final course grades into Power School beginning May 26. So, these are written narratives, and these, and the form that we've got. It's also going to be a click with some drop-down options for them to choose statements that we've created. Because as you can imagine, 30, 25 students writing written narratives, that would take more than the time that we're planning to allot for this process. So, we're making it clean, easy, but also wanting those parents to get good feedback about their students. And then feedback should be, should be mailed to home, hopefully along with the report cards. And we're going to determine the appropriate date to send all of that out for our elementary students. For our 6-8 students, the Department of Public Instruction on the left has indicated that students will receive a final course grade of a PC-19, which is a pass, or WC-19, which is a withdrawal. And those teachers will also provide year-end written feedback for students based on their learning for this school year. And then the school district leaders will decide that format. Again, Mrs. Mann and Ms. Carter have worked. I have reviewed what they have created, and it looks great. They are also going to collaborate with our Student Services Director about the social and emotional feedback form. A WC-19 does not mean that the student has failed the course, nor does it mean that implies that there's a grade retention for a middle school student. But the WC-19 just simply means that there's a lack of evidence that they've mastered the content and the standards. And so, the middle school students that are also enrolled in high school courses will follow the grading options below for high school. And those students will receive course credit, but as in existing policy, the grade will not be counted in the GPA, right? So, those middle school students who are taking high school courses, they'll follow the same recommendations in 9/11, but it will not be counted into their GPA. What will we communicate for K-8, 6-8 schools and Pitt County schools? We'll do the same with the feedback form. We'll have that ready for parents. We'll put it into the, make a copy for parents. We'll also place one in the CUME folder for the teacher to have, for the parent to have. And then those middle school teachers will begin entering their feedback and entering course grades into Power School beginning May 26. And I'll share more as to why May 26 is, is important. And then that feedback will be mailed to their homes. Where it gets a bit more challenging to explain is our 9/11. So, 9/11 is the left column, and it is, I'll share with you what the Department of Public Instruction has directed us to do in terms of recommendation to the State Board of Education. And then on the right, I will share what Pitt County schools will do in regards to this. So, the students in grades 9/11 and non-graduating seniors will choose how each final course grade will appear on their transcript, whether they're in the course for the year or for the semester. Now, if a student can't make a choice, cannot be reached, then what we will have to do in our window of time, if they, we cannot reach them between now and the end of the school year, or that date, the 26th and the, end of the school year, they will be permitted to do so after school opens in August, all right? So, they'll be able to do that. So over to the right, those students who could not be reached, we're going to look at the calendar one it, once it's revised. And we're going to give them forty-five days according to the recommendation to choose one of the options below. So they'll have forty-five days to be able to do that. So what's the first option that students able to choose? They're able to report the numeric grade, which is their highest grade, representing either their learning as of March thirteenth or as improved through the semester as remote learning continued. Uh students will receive course credit if they choose this option. And the numeric grade and quality points for each will also be calculated into the GPA. So simply put, if they choose the numeric grade, uh they certainly are able to um have the quality points as well as it calculates into the GPA. The second option that students could choose is to report a PC nineteen or WC nineteen, which is a pass or withdrawal in the course. And students opting to receive a PC nineteen will will receive course credit. If they receive a pass or withdrawal, they will, it will not impact their GPA. And so a WC nineteen receives no course credit, but students could retake that course whether it's through future credit recovery or repeating a course for credit. So if we go to the right, as we look at that first option, uh it says, "Report the numeric grade, their highest grade representing either their learning as of March thirteenth or as improved through the semester as remote learning." So or as improved through the semester uh as remote learning continued uh has, could be many definitions. So what we've understa- understood it to be after thinking and talking and having conversations and trying to make sure that uh we promote what's best for our students, what is best for our students. And so to address or as improved through the semester as remote learning continued, is students may apply the grade earned in R four, which is the four-six weeks for the traditional high school calendar, or R three for the third nine weeks for the early colleges, or request that the teacher grade the assignments that they submitted between March thirtieth and May the twenty-second. If the submitted grades improve their grades, if the submitted assignments improve their grade, that grade may be entered into Power School as determined by the teacher, but ultimately the principal grade, the principals grade and classify. So an example obviously would be, I'm taking um Math one and I have in R four uh eight and eighty-five. And I want my grade to be better. Well, the work that you, the student would have submitted to the teacher between March thirtieth and May twenty-second, and that date is key too, I'll share more about that date. Um the teach, the parent and the student can say, "I'd like for you to grade that work and tell me the average of that remote learning, um the remote learning assignments and the semester, average it together, is it higher or is it lower?" And then the student could choose the higher obviously of the two, but that would come at parent request. And we're, we're going to send all of this out, that would come at parent request. Um so the semester is, the school year is ending. So even if students decide after this goes out, I want to participate between now and the end of the semester to see if it improves my grade. We're going to do with special students and they are able to take that option if they choose, okay? Uh feedback would also be mailed um to uh homes, which would be the report card. And then students may choose the best option for each course that they choose to take. So um and I've put, we put that in there, students may choose the best option for each course. Students ta- high schoolers take four courses. It doesn't have to be all pass, it doesn't have to be all withdrawal. It could be a menu, "I'll pass in this class, I'll withdraw here, I'll take the grade in this class." It's totally up to the student, the parent and the teacher, and then ultimately the principal grades and classifies. So we, we thought about that uh recommendation and wanted to look at it from as many angles as we possibly could to make sure that we were um um creating opportunities for our students. And then finally, the Department of Public Construction says, "Will my child be promoted to the next grade?" Uh student promotion and retention will remain the decision of the principal and the staff. And schools will primarily focus on those retention cases that were already well underway prior to March thirteenth for reasons other than the impact of covid nineteen. Uh so I'll just share with the board, prior to this policy coming out, a principal did ask that question maybe the second or third day uh that we were out of school. What happens if I, if we were going to retain a student? And we were very clear that you need to have clear documentation way before March thirteenth. So if that student was failing, there needs to be documentation of conversations with parents. There needs to be documentations that interventions were in place. Um other than that, then that student would not need to be recommended for retention. We understand that the principals made that decision. However, we communicated that way before this policy came out. So we've communicated it um and so uh again, ultimately principals grade and classify. So that's um, those are the recommendations from the Department of Public Instruction in the short version and with a crosswalk that we created for board members to see um exactly how the uh educational programs and services will um execute these recommendations from the Department of Public Construction um and to ensure that obviously again, we are uh creating opportunities for all of our students. All right, so end of year schedule for remote learning. So that means um when the Department of Public Construction taught, shared this policy and these recommendations about grades, um as you saw from the data that it's, we're on a decline in student participation. So it's also going to be important too that with that task list of things that you saw that teachers need to do at the end of the school year, that at some point we do have to conclude remote learning. And so what we're proposing and wanted to share with the board are some key dates and timeframes and rationales as to why. Uh first, uh remote learning, we'd like to say, uh share with the board that we're, we are hoping to end remote learning um on May eighth for early colleges, which would be this Friday, and on May twenty-second for our traditional schools. May fifteenth would be the last packet uh paper packet pickup. So instruction would actually continue through May the twenty-second. They get that fifteenth would be the paper packet. And then the eighteenth through the twenty-second would be the virtual learning. And then the twenty-second would end um the paper packet and virtual learning experience for Pitt County schools. All right? And so then we have Memorial Day, which is a holiday. And so what happens between May the twenty-sixth through May the tenth? Um those students, teachers will be contacting parents and students to complete those grading requirements that I shared with you prior to. And the reason we shared, we decided on May twenty-second is that's actually the day after that, that's typically our EOG end of grade test window. That typically would be our end of grade test window when the stu- teachers are closing things out um in instruction and according to our pacing guides, instruction would have sort of closed and we're in a review period. So that's what we're proposing um to the board that we share with parents that that remote learning experience would end for our traditional schools on the twenty-second. And this would give teachers twelve days to close out the school year and to con- uh complete those grading requirements as uh written by DPI that I previously shared with you. And that concludes my uh information from educational programs and services.
Thank you, Dr. Lassiter. Um at this point, I would like to open it up and see if anyone has any questions. Um Carol, are we able to?
I have a question.
Oh, I think that was Anna Barrett.
It is.
Yep, go ahead.
Um so I, I, like I'm sure many of you have, have received a lot of questions from parents, particularly in high school. That's not a surprise. Um and where there appears to have been some inconsistency um from teachers, you know, some were allowing kids to improve their grades, some were decreasing student grades during this time. Um I would assume, A, that um the, the principals have received information and have distributed it so that all of our teachers are on the same page. Um but second, if we find that there are situations where a teacher is not complying and a parent contacts me, um would your recommendation be to send them to the principal? Or, you know, how do we direct those particular concerns if there are teachers taking a different approach?
Yes, ma'am. So we have shut down Power School, so there's, nothing can be entered in terms of grades into Power School. So even if the teachers, um and I will share, Dr. Linger Kane will affirm, um I have, we, our team has been so clear, um we have notes from every meeting on what to do, what not to do. Uh Mrs. Tate and Mr. Bowers have been in this experience and we've been explicitly clear that we are not grading. And the policy itself poses a challenge because we chose not to grade as a district because we didn't, we wouldn't fulfill those five critical factors that I shared with you a few weeks ago. But when the Department of Public Instruction made the decision, then we had no choice except to do what was best for students. And if they wanted to improve their grade, they could. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through and be explicit with what I've shared tonight. Um we may need to have an FAQ for teachers. If they've graded assignments, then those assignments can be included if requested by the parent and the student. If it is not requested, then the final grade will have to come from anything that happened prior to March the thirteenth. So we will be very clear, if there are any challenges or questions that may come up, yes, ma'am, they would need to speak with the principal. We will meet, we are meeting with principals tomorrow to finalize and share this. Um we believe that DPI will send one more document, but at this point, uh it's, this is it. This is what we'll get to. We, we are finalizing and sharing this with principals and being very clear and explicit again on how this will roll out. Um and until we're clear, we will not unlock Power School. So there are no grades will be entered until we're clear. And Power School will not be unlocked until May the twenty-sixth. So teachers will be working from May twenty-sixth until June tenth on grades, calling parents, because we're going to give students as much time as they can to improve their grade by submitting assignments to the remote learning experience.
Anna Barrett, did that answer your question?
Uh yeah, it did. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, I believe that was Caroline. Oh, Tracy.
Tracy, sorry.
I'm sorry, I feel a little bit like Al Michaels sitting up here in the booth calling the game from way up north. Um yes, go ahead, Ms. Everett-Lance.
Thank you. Dr. Lassiter, I had a couple of questions for you. Um when it came to the grading policy presentation, I wanted to see if you could give me some clarification on a couple of things. I think there was a column about um trying to improve the grades through remote learning scenario for the nine eleven students.
Yes, ma'am.
And what, am I understanding correct that it would be R three grades as an option for the early colleges to help improve the grade?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause um Innovation actually already had their R three, or their quarter-three grades um given actually just as we closed schools. So I didn't know if for Innovation at least, I'm not sure about Pitt, um would it make more sense to do the fourth quarter as an opportunity for improvement?
We'll look, let me check on that. I'll talk with Mr. Bowers. Um actually, he may be on this call. Mr. Bowers, can I unmute you and you respond to that question?
The early colleges are on a nine-week grading period and they had just finished Q three.
Yes.
However, however, when the state school uh closed the schools uh and put out the remote learning guidelines, we, we basically instructed all principals to tell all teachers, "Do not add any further grades."
Right.
Okay? And so essentially, what we're seeing is going to happen, we're hoping for a little more clearance uh from the state in the release they put out with their, their toolkit tomorrow, uh is that we'll probably leave those empty grading periods on report cards just blank. And what's going to happen is teachers will manually put in the final score that will go into their transcript record for the high school students.
Okay, well, that also applied to, I think it was a recommendation from DPI initially. I don't know that it's built into our recommendations, but they spoke about uh also using the fall semester um average or final uh for the year-long courses such as Innovation. So that would kind of apply to that too. Because they have English and Avid year long there.
Correct, for any year-long classes. Um and, and again, they've, they've put in a tangled web for us here.
Right.
But the, 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 they'll get a, we're still working through that. But yes, there will be uh a half credit given because the fall course populates in Power School as a, uh has been stored as a semester one grade.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the second half of that, the spring portion, the student will have a choice whether to count a numeric grade or take a P or a WC. So there's a lot of, a lot of conversations we're going to have to have between counselors and teachers and students uh to work through this, but we'll be able to do it.
Okay, thank you. And that kind of leads into my question too, when you, when you mentioned the parents. So my other question, Dr. Lassiter, was I know that thi- this seems to be more driven towards a student decision about um whether to receive a numeric grade. I just wonder about the component of having parental involvement um and communication about some of these decisions, um especially for um, well, just for several reasons. And especially for our students with IEPs, I just think that um parental involvement is very important for any kind of decisions about some of these grades.
Yes, ma'am, and um we are, we are still working through this. We have a very, um the, the recommendations from DPI are just much of a skeleton and we're sort of having to add some, I guess, meat to the bones as you would say. Um we're go- we will have to have some type of documentation from the teacher that they've done this in consultation with the parent. Um we don't want to leave this to just the student uh because the policy does recommend that it's in consultation with the parent. And so we'll have to have some formalized docu- some documented way um to do this. Um this is a very, uh I guess, still touchy subject in that when collaborating with other districts, even in the, our two RESSAs, um districts aren't releasing what they're going to do because they are still waiting on information from DPI. So hopefully, when we get our final piece of information tomorrow, it'll also help us in putting some final uh pieces of this together. So you're absolutely right, uh parent and student, this will be, not just be a decision made by the student as much as we can. I know that there are times when we, we're not able to get in contact with the parent. It's just, it's just something that happens. But we're going to do our best effort to make it a collaborative effort between the teacher, the parent and the student. And we'll put something together in our final piece to principals when we meet with them, high school principals tomorrow um to sort of organize this.
Okay, thank you. And so last um comment or? Um so I would guess the col- all the college courses sort of parallel this as well for the early college situation since they're sort of going by the same sort of system of taking a withdrawal, a pass or a numeric grade as an option, especially like I know ECU, some of the university systems are doing that. So I would assume that those decisions would follow along at, at course about those as well?
Yes, ma'am, that would be the case. Um and much of that too was if they were able to finish the course, they were encouraged to go ahead and finish the course. So um much of this also will, pretty much all of it too, they can take a pass or withdrawal even if they're at the early college. It just depends on their early, ho- early colleges, it depends on their situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um I, I have one more question if nobody else is waiting.
Yes, go ahead, Anna Barrett. I have no idea if anyone else has another question, so go ahead.
It's a follow-up to Tracy's asking about the um PCC classes for early college. I just want to clarify, it's not standing in front of you, that the, the student can choose in, in nine eleven anyway, nine through eleven, um to take the grade or take the pass with regard to their high school transcript, but that the letter grade will still remain on their PCC transcript, which is what the, what colleges are going to receive in order to determine whether a student gets credit.
I believe, yes, that is correct. Mr. Bowers, will you confirm? We'll unmute him.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, that's correct.
The col- the college transcript is the authority on all college classes, yes.
Which is why they were allowed to continue if they were able to continue um in the course.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Hi, um Math Bear, this is Amy.
Hi, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Amy, and then Melinda.
Um I can um just add to what um Anna Barrett was asking about as far as um PCC is concerned. Um we have been told that we are, we give letter grades A through D. Um we are not allowed to give F um this semester. So um yes, they can get um an A through a D. However, if they do get a D, they do have the option of taking a withdrawal, but they still don't get credit for the class, but it won't hurt their GPA. So i- if you know any students that are in that D territory, they can, but they have to request it from the instructor. So that's another option too. Um but again, they get no credit for the class if they do that.
Thank you.
And Melinda.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, so if, if a student was taking a course, they could, they could withdraw even if they weren't failing it and then repeat it next year?
According to the do, the guidance that we received, they could. Mr. Bowers, I'm going to mute him again to make sure. Did you hear that question?
Yes, the, in advising the students, um, if they're passing the course as of March 13th, they can get credit for the course by taking the P and it won't hurt their GPA.
Right.
So the only ones looking at, at the WC would be those who were failing as of March 13th and, and didn't want to do any of the remote learning. But it won't hurt their GPA. It'll go in as a WC. They withdrew from the course, no credit.
I think, Mr. Bowers, her question more so too is if they were passing and they choose to repeat the course, is that an option for them at this time?
Absolutely.
And then, um, I just lost thought there. Oh, so if, like if you were in a Math 2 class and you took the P for passing, you could go into Math 3 next year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you'd still be able to do that.
Okay. And will count, will the teachers make recommendations? Because I did have a parent, and I asked that one question specifically because she had a, a student that was taking an AP course, and it was not, you know, I think she might have had like a C, and it was like, we're going to withdraw from it. But she's passing it, but then I said, I don't know, you know.
Right.
Who's going to make those recommendations? Should she repeat it? Should she?
In consultation with the teacher and the parent, they're, they're going to have to make that decision ultimately in terms of what's best for the student.
Okay.
So it'll be up to the, that collaborative effort as to how to proceed.
Okay, and the, and I'm sorry, I'm just thinking of questions as it comes on. So because that was an AP course, if that student were to say, okay, let me take the AP exam, and they did not get the college credit, would they be able to repeat it next year and take the AP exam again?
Mr. Bowers, did you get that question about if they've taken the AP exam, would they be able to take it again? I think you've stooped all over.
Sorry.
I want to say, I want to say that they can take the AP exam, because college board's going to take your money anytime you're willing to, to pay up and take the exam. Um, just to lighten the mood a little bit, but uh, now the AP exams are, are going to take place. The window for that is May 11th through the, the 22nd, and our AP teachers have been strongly encouraged and, and, and trying to get those kids engaged in, in support activities. Um, believe it or not, college board is, is offering at-home AP exams.
Yeah, I'm going to say at-home.
Yeah.
And so students who were, you know, who were fully engaged in it and felt they had a good shot, they're, they're going to be able to take that exam. It's an abbreviated exam. It's only 45 minutes, and so we've encouraged them, go for it. What have you got to lose?
Okay.
Yeah, and we put resources very early. Dr. Linker had us put up resources online mid-March to ensure that that continued and that they had support, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm so sorry, if I may, we have our new Director of Secondary. If I could just have her say hello and just introduce to the board, uh, Ms. Wanisha Mann, our new Director of Secondary Education.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Mann.
Hello, everybody. I'm very excited about joining the team. Have met some amazing people and nice to finally, I guess, meet our board. And very much so look forward to working with you guys, and thank you for this opportunity.
Welcome aboard, Ms. Mann. We're very glad to have you. I, I apologize for the time that you're joining us in the middle of the chaos, but certainly glad to have you um, on our team. Um, are there any other questions before Dr. Lassiter leaves the podium? I don't think we've heard from Benji, Caroline, Mary, or Worth. Do any of you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. My question would be, oh, we're going to get, and we may already have a copy of this presentation. Or we're going to have something that we can refer to, because I, you know, that'd help me a lot when I get a question from a parent. I might could, uh.
Carol says, Carol, Worth, Carol says that she has uploaded it to Symbly. You may have to refresh, but the presentation is in Symbly now.
Carol says, why?
Your, your presentation has been up, this presentation has been uploaded to Symbly. You may need to refresh or maybe log out and log back in, but we do have access to it electronically now.
Okay, good.
Okay, we will move on to the next presentation. Thank you, Dr. Lassiter. And Jennifer Johnson is headed to the podium, I think. Oh, Operations. Matt? Okay, Operations is next with Matt on the line. Go ahead, Matt.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
With um, with the unfortunate circumstances that the students aren't coming back, I guess the light for the Operations Department is we get to um, add three or four weeks to our summer maintenance and summer cleaning um, processes that we do every year. So on uh, Monday, May the 11th, we are actually going to start um, our custodial cleaning process, summer clean process, to include our stripping and waxing of floors. Um, we have started our wax delivery to all the schools, uh, started that last week, and we will be done by Friday getting that all out. Um, all of our um, schools have started to get their schedules in um, to Grant Anderson to schedule our HVACs for the, the areas in the buildings in which they'll be stripping and waxing throughout the summer. Um, our maintenance department um, has started, will start on Monday to do their summer projects. Our contractors will start Monday. This is going to include our painters. Um, our contractors to wrap up our last three secure corridors. Um, our contractors doing our uh, access control um, throughout the campus from the grant that uh, we received earlier this year. So that's going to uh, really give us the window to get in here and, and get a jump on a lot of these things and, and get uh, you know, a few extra weeks and, and hopefully get uh, the ability to, to come out of this with uh, better, cleaner schools uh, for the reopening. We're also looking at what it's going to take to reopen. We've seen some um, guidelines come out um, that are preliminary. So we're looking at those and, and trying to determine um, some of the things that the Operations Department will need to do to uh, help facilitate that as we do open up um, this coming fall. We have asked our prin, our principals to bring their, their staffs back in, um, starting last week through this week to start removing their personal items from classrooms in the building so that the, the staff, the custodial staff and the, the maintenance staff can get in there and start actually doing this stuff. We've provided guidelines out to um, each school to help them uh, schedule their staffs in there, um, to go along with the, the guidelines from uh, uh, public health and the CDC as far as uh, gatherings and, and social distancing and things like that. So along with supporting all of the other activities that were going on in this unprecedented time, we are actually looking forward to and moving forward with uh, our typical operations for the summer and, and getting the start a little bit earlier, and, and we're pleased to do that. And again, looking towards the future on what it's going to take to reopen these schools in the fall. Are there any questions on any of that?
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any questions for you, Matt. Thank you very much. And the next update will be related to public information with um, our Public Information Officer, Jennifer Johnson.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone online and here um, in the building. Uh, first of all, I just want to give you an update on the parent survey that we sent out. Uh, we started that on the 27th of April, and we've gotten just under 3,000 responses. Uh, got some preliminary information that that represents about 20%. Uh, represents around 20, 4,800 students were represented based on that data. So uh, we've gotten a good response rate. We are going to keep that open uh, until May 10th so that we can get some more, uh, maybe a better representation. And we are waiting for those bilingual and paper options to come back to us. We did send those out with meals this past week. So hopefully, we'll get some more of those, that information. We, we will disaggregate this information with ECU and then be able to present that at a board work session at a later time. But you can see that most of our responses on the right were from the first 48 hours or so, and um, we, we have kind of waned from there. We'll do one more push on social media, but hopefully we'll get some, some good data uh, from that. The next one is just an announcement that our Education Connection TV show is now online. So all episodes, all three weeks of the first episodes are now accessible um, online. We do have new shows airing uh, through at least May 22nd. I believe the sponsor has paid through June 5th, so we need to negotiate at that point uh, what we want to do, if we want to continue. We do have plenty of teachers who want to continue, et cetera. It's just a question of engagement. And then possibly, we could use the time slot from WNCT or WITN is also offered to air graduation footage, whatever we decide regarding that. So that Education Connection TV show is now online and accessible. And again, in this presentation, you do have a link to all of those shows and teachers. I'm just really proud of that. And then it is, we have lots to celebrate in Pitt County schools. Uh, we did have a thank you for our principals because it was Principal Appreciation Day on Friday. Uh, kind of had a drive-through thank you for principals. Was glad to see uh, some of the faces that we have missed so much, even at a distance in a car. Uh, so that was a great um, celebration. This week is actually School Nurses Week as well. Uh, that did not make it to this presentation, but that is not a, a reflection on what we think about our school nurses, but it is School Nurses Week. It does happen to coincide with Teacher Appreciation Week, and we will be celebrating our school nurses this Wednesday, uh, which is School Nurses Day. Uh, but on to Teacher Appreciation Week. It is a big week for Pitt County schools. And so uh, we did start it off today with a couple of things. Dr. Linker wrote a heartfelt letter to teachers, and they received that today along with a video from their, uh, from some students. We are featuring Teacher of the Year nominees every day, uh, not nominees, finalists. Uh, some of those finalists for Teacher of the Year have been featured each day, um, and they will through Friday. Uh, there is a tools kit actually that Department of Public Instruction presented to us, and it includes several things. You have the link there, but if you look at your top right, one of the things they're asking our communities to do, we did push this out through social media, is uh, turn lights on for teachers on May 5th um, at 8:20 PM in military time, that's 2020, uh, for 20 minutes. And so just turning lights on for our teachers, um, that could mean teachers at home as well. So um, for 20 minutes, we're, we're asking our schools to do that and our community to just really contribute or just turn a light on, uh, on your porch. Uh, 8:20 again on Tuesday for Teacher Appreciation Day. Uh, we will have a special Education Connection Teacher Appreciation Show on Friday, uh, May 8th. Super cute video with teachers' voices, I mean, with student voices and faces too. We've missed them. Um, check those out on social media if you haven't seen them. Just a real quick report on school nutrition. Uh, we have to date, and it's a little bit more today, but over 460,000 meals, almost 500,000 meals served um, from the end of school or 316, that Monday when we were out of school, uh, through Friday. There is an update in school nutrition in that Department of Health and Human Services is going to distribute monies to families in the public school system as assistance. Uh, so some questions you might get asked are presented here. Who's eligible? Anybody in a current CEP school? So all of our community eligibility programs, schools, or all students who are currently free reduced meal approved. So all students who have filled out an application and have been approved for the 1920 school year, those have been already submitted to Department of Health and Human Services. And uh, so another question you might get is, uh, in other words, this is fully um, given by the Department of Health and Human Services. We just provide them the information of who's eligible. But what is distributed? $371 per child in a debit card? If someone already has an EBT debit card, it will be auto-loaded, or new cards will be issued? And how will people know if they're receiving it? DHHS will send a letter prior to the card being sent to families. Another question you might get is, what if my finances have changed since the pandemic? Well, the good part of that is DHHS is going to do another pull of data. Uh, so we have another wave of data that we can give them. And so we encourage families whose finances have changed since the pandemic to apply for free and reduced meals through PCS. Uh, so again, don't forget who's eligible, CEP schools or those who are approved. Uh, those are, that's the data that we give to them. So if you become free and reduced approved, then your information will be sent. So again, those forms, there's a reminder of where those forms are. They're on our website. They're at all school sites. Uh, they're at the school nutrition office here in the central office. But also, uh, just as an extra effort, paper applications were delivered with meals last week, just reminding people. And then parents, if they don't want to um, come in, they can mail those directly to Pitt County Schools, to our address. Okay, any questions before we move on to graduation on public information or school nutrition?
Ms. Blunt-Williams, did you have a question?
The assistant, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead and start over now. We can hear you now.
I was asking Jennifer, was the 300 and some odd dollars per child or per household?
Per child.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, hearing your other questions, let's go on to talk about graduations.
Okay, so we are um, happy to come to you today. This is a subject that has been talked about quite a bit, and as it should be. Uh, but before we go on to options that we are presenting, uh, we just had to really think about what is our task for graduation this year? And just to keep that as a focus, we came up with our, kind of our vision for what 2020 graduation should really look like so that we can keep that perspective and keep those boundaries in mind. Uh, so really, our task for graduation is to provide a dignified 2020 graduation. We want this graduation to be special uh, to our seniors, uh, but also we have to consider safety and equity. Those are our priorities. So again, we want to provide a dignified 2020 graduation uh, for Pitt County School seniors with safety and equity as priorities. So with that in mind, um, before we get into a graduation, I want you to think about this particular board meeting. Um, and we'll keep it there. Think about this board meeting and how we normally would conduct a board meeting. You would be in uh, here in the boardroom, and uh, we would come and go, and we would have all of our, our um, sessions and presentations, et cetera. And then think about what that looks like now that we've had a pandemic. And uh, all of the, the things that need to be in place, all of the preparation for that, all of the new things that we need to do, such as um, learning technology and assistance and all kinds of different things that we've had to do. So now, keep that in mind because we have the same challenge with graduation, uh, but there's an added piece, a human nature and a very emotional piece that we recognize. So first of all, let's look at a traditional graduation. Um, take a pandemic away from it and COVID-19 away from that, and let's really think about what we value in a traditional graduation. And that is honoring senior accomplishment. That is our goal for every graduation and the end of the year ceremonies that we have for seniors. Uh, we have those ceremonial traditions like pomp and circumstance and all kinds of um, music and different speeches and walking in and out uh, with our classmates. So all of those ceremonial traditions have been passed down for decades, and we value those. We also value a shared experience with friends and family. That's the point. We, we buy plane tickets, and grandma comes from Ohio to see uh, their uh, grandchild graduate and, and, and everything in between. It's a shared and communal experience with our community. We do this together because we receive uh, inspiration from our speakers and our leaders uh, and valedictorians and salutatorians and um, class presidents. And um, ROTC gets to present, and so many things are, are part of this. That walk across the stage is super important, hearing the name called, receiving a diploma. And then, of course, all the goodbyes and the hugs, sometimes this will, sometimes this happens to be the last time that students see a, a particular teacher or even a friend or a coach or a staff member. So those hugs and goodbyes are very significant, and it is closure as well and a send-off to the next chapter in life. And it is closure as well and a send-off to the next chapter in life. So let's look at graduation through the lens of living in a pandemic. So with all of those things that we value, here's our current situation. We have our state stay-at-home orders. We have our health department recommended safety precautions for COVID-19. We have to think about risk management for students and for families and for our school staff. We also have to think about the risk of the community spread and our community at large and movement of large numbers of people. We have the unknowns of COVID-19 symptoms and spread. We also have changing orders and restrictions. We have our current executive order is number 121. If you want to click on that link there, you don't have to click on it here. But we do have a current order. But what is our order going to be in June and what about later? So we have to consider those things. We also received graduation guidelines from NCDPI. And then what is our capacity to really manage and produce a dignified, safe and equitable ceremony? So first, let me click on what our NCDPI released graduation guidelines are. You've probably already seen, that's not the right one. Sorry about that. Yeah. You have probably already seen the, I will prevent, uh, provide you with a link to the correct one. And you've already seen the executive order. But I have a copy of the high school graduation ceremonies that was issued on Friday, the guidance for that. And basically, it just asks us to consider all of the topics. It asks us to really engage our community in deciding what we need to do for graduation. It asks us to consider the executive order number 121. Right now, that executive order says to stay at least six feet away apart from others and it bans gatherings of more than 10 people. It also gives examples of potentially permissible graduation ceremonies as of May 1st. One is a drive-in, one is a drive-through ceremony. An individualized ceremony is also offered, a hybrid ceremony. There are some additional strategies, just suggestions to honor graduates. Some safety measures that we as school systems are required to keep, such as clearly marking the exit and the entry, considering whether face coverings will be required or suggested, considering how diplomas will be distributed. Frequent environmental cleaning in between, walking across the stage, setting those expectations. In summary, at the end of this document, it says, "High school graduation is an important milestone. We are urged to engage families." We have done that through a survey that we have sent out and through our principals. Local public health officials and local board attorneys as ceremonies are planned. And then social distancing and mask gathering requirements issued through North Carolina should be enforced by public health officials. And they have to be integrated into plans and enforced to protect the health and safety of students, families, staff and the public. So that's just a summary of that document. Again, I can send that to you. So let's look. Now that we have the things that we value in a traditional graduation and our current situation. Then what we did was we looked and we researched, what are other districts doing? We have had many, many conversations that started with, have you thought of this? Or what do you think about that? So believe me, we have thought of or heard of just about everything at this point. So we have talked with other districts. We've been on state calls. We have considered anything from virtual live hybrid and delayed graduations. And then we have some research and feedback from three groups here, from our principals. Our principals prefer some kind of in-person option where they actually get to see their graduates one more time and give them those diplomas. They actually preferred that all schools use a similar format. So they want some consistency between all six or eight, actually, high schools. That includes our, our alternative schools. They will defer to district guidance and they are concerned with safety. And some of our larger schools are definitely concerned and our smaller schools concerned with crowd management. Human nature, again, and emotion can take over in a large gathering and they are concerned with how to manage that. So parents, we did a survey. You have a link to some raw data there. It's a very thick packet of information. We received over 1,000 responses from parents and teachers and seniors. And basically, we took that information and we talked about what are, what are people saying? So the key words that were used that talked about anything outside that referred to a football field or outside an ECU or something that's more of a spread-out occasion. That was by far the parents' number-one option that was mentioned. Again, not far behind that was some sort of inside, such as ECU, Mingis, inside gyms and somewhat of a normal graduation. Again, we did not give options on this survey. We asked for people to give options. It was very difficult for us to get options and have people sort of vote on that because of the definition of some of these is, is so difficult to explain. Some sort of virtual graduation was the next one option for parents. And then delayed graduation, about 5% there. 2.5% mentioned cars, drive-up, drive-through, drive-in. And we did have some people who just said, "Don't have graduation" or "I'm very unsure." But that was very few. Students actually said some kind of normal and inside graduation was by far, actually not too by far, but much, much better percentage difference than the outside one. But again, these both reflect some kind of normal, traditional type of experience. Virtual, again, followed with delayed and cars and then unsure. So those, that's how we categorize that. And again, we have all of that raw data for you, tons of comments. Basically, our, our parents are dealing with this and it's a very emotional and difficult decision to make. And so their voices were very important for us to, to listen to and hear. Okay, so some of the options that we have that are feasible options that we think are within state restrictions, safety, equity and our capacity. What capacity does Pitt County schools actually have to pull off something that we decide? That's a very important task for us. So these are four options. And again, we do have on the line two people that have worked closely with, that we've all worked closely together. Ms. Mann and Mr. Bowers are online too. So let's look through these options. Number one is some kind of live and communal graduation with limitations. So communal means everyone together, the community comes together. Okay, so some kind of, and I will explain these in just a second. So take a look at these four options as we think through and use that lens. So some kind of live, meaning we see graduates live, all together, communal, with some limitations. That's social distancing and restrictions that the state or DPI has given us. Option two is live or individual drive-through or walk-through graduation with limitations. Again, we'll explain some of these. So the difference between one and two is communal, it all happens at the same time. And individual is something more individual for families. Option three was a completely virtual graduation. And option four was a delayed graduation ceremony. Okay, let's look at these four options. Okay? So a live communal graduation, it's that previously determined date, those traditional June dates that we have put out there or around that time when people expect graduation to happen. It's one event for each school and it's limited attendance. We would use social distancing orders and hygiene practice, considering masks, gloves and cleaning. We do note that this, a large gathering with people out of cars and sitting in somewhere, a football field or actually is not allowed under our large gathering limits under the executive order 121. And that is mentioned in the executive order and it's also mentioned in the graduation guidelines that the DPI put out. We don't know when those are changing, but again, or if they are. We only know what we know at this point. And again, some of our graduates or schools need to begin planning for this. We also know that this option is not allowed under those guidelines unless it is a drive-in or drive-through option. So a drive-in or drive-through option that's communal, happens all at one time, is allowed or suggested because it removes that social distancing burden on families and, and staff. And there are some options there. Again, all of those things I can send you in that link. Okay? Going on through option two, thank you for hanging with me here. Two more options after this and then we can have some discussion and see what you think. So live, individual, drive or walk-through graduation with limitations. So that's more of an individual graduation. In other words, what do we value in our graduations? We valued that walk across the stage. We valued the traditional ceremonial things. So what could we do with this that seems similar? Again, if you had a live communal graduation with limitations and it happened on one day for option one, we're assuming that we're going to put in some of those same traditional ceremonies, ceremonial options. For option two, however, that seems limited. We, we would stagger this schedule over several weeks. Have several students come in at a time. Socially distanced, allow only a few people either to drive in to grab their diploma or walk in to receive their diploma on a table or with pomp and circumstance playing, et cetera. There are several options to do with this. But if what is valued is an individual time with a family or family members and utilizing that cap and gown and going in and receiving a diploma, being able to go to that campus one more time, then we would have to limit family that is present. In that document from DPI, they do say that 10 people are what is limited. So we would have to figure out how many staff members it would take us or how many staff members would be in the room. If that number is three, then we can only require seven family members. If that number is five, we can only require five family members to be in that gathering at a time. Again, this is a staggered schedule that was repeated there and likely at the school sites at this point. This would be, because it's staggered over several weeks, this is likely going to happen at our school sites. And of course, ECU is having their own virtual graduation. So the likelihood of utilizing ECU, we would have to determine and figure out if we could use something like this. Okay? All right, option three. Option three is a completely virtual graduation. So some sort of video compilation. Traditional elements are included. It would include photos of graduates, all photos of graduates in their drape and tux as we've previously had during our graduation. Ceremonies before that aired before the ceremony could be utilized. It could be aired on our traditional graduation date or streamed online or put online. It wouldn't be really streamed because it wouldn't be live. But we do have, we could put it on our YouTube channel so that other people could see that and put it on our social media and our websites. And then diplomas would not be picked up. So there's no exchange there. They would be mailed. Okay? One more option. This is an option, again, you can look back and see what people thought of. But here's an option, delayed graduation ceremony, traditional graduation at a later date. Restrictions may or may not be lifted and there's possible access to traditional sites like Mingis Coliseum. So those are the four options that we have for you. And I would like to give a chance before we open it up for discussion for Mr. Bowers or Ms. Mann to add anything that, that I did not cover or any other things, thoughts for the board or anyone listening at home.
I'd, I congratulate PIO for the wonderful job she did of walking through that. We recognize there's a lot of emotion tied to this for our community and we want to do the best that we can. However, from my old social studies teacher standpoint, we are a state agency and we've got to follow those state orders. We, we can't go rogue and go out on our own to do something locally. That's not within those guidelines. And so trying to plan something, I love the vision that we shared at the beginning that has dignity to it, to recognize the moment. And, and I will say, our capacity to be able to pull off something at our schools, we, we need to start getting moving. Things like this don't just happen with a decision of, hey, everybody show up tomorrow and we're going to do this. We definitely want to get our logistics in order to be able to pull this off in, in a nice ceremony with dignity.
And Ms. Mann, did you have anything to add?
I just, I second what Preston said and I think that, you know, I really appreciate the feedback from our community. And we just want to make the best and, and the best decision possible and keep our community safe as well. So I will defer back to you, Ms. Mann.
Okay, at this time, I guess we'll open it up to questions or comments from board members?
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Worth.
Did you get any feedback from the principals, how they felt about having something at their schools?
Yes, so we talked with principals and sure, there are some limitations like who might have a stage or who doesn't. And we've talked through some of those things, but it seems to be something that's not really a, has any hurdles to that and certainly an option.
Right. And how did they feel about, you know, there would be a sense of ownership there for the kid coming back to their, to their schools? Did they, did they have one preference? Or the principals and faculty, did they have a preference, preference on what they liked? Because I noticed that on the surveys, delaying graduation was, that was only a small group of people wanting to delay. And I know most, especially most kids, when they come to the end of the year, they're ready, ready to get their diplomas and start thinking about their college and, and making arrangements and going on vacation and getting planning for their college. So I was just wondering, you know, about the, how everyone felt about having it at their schools?
Yes, so to answer your, one of your comments about delay, that is correct. We talked about how kids who might have scholarship, athletes or military or other career options, that, that that would be difficult to delay a graduation and get everyone to come back. Not impossible, but we felt like that was reflected in the, the desires there. So principals, I turned it back to this slide. They preferred an in-person option, of course. Now, I will tell you that we talked with our principals first and we talked with them for two weeks, the very first Tuesday after spring break. Now, they were thinking, of course, and we were all looking at things. But the first time we gathered as a group was that Tuesday after spring break to really think about and, and challenge them. We came back, we gave them some options that we had seen across the state and gave them some examples, gave them time to process, what would a virtual graduation look like? What would an in-person or individual graduation look like? What would it look like at my school? And gave them kind of a week to process that. We talked with them again that next Tuesday. And from that and the survey, we then created option one, two, three and four. So to answer your question, we have not presented the principals with option one, two, three or four. But if you look at what they're preferring here, they do prefer some kind of in-person option, which seemed to be what parents and students did prefer. They did mention that it would, you know, with some consistency, that would be helpful. In other words, if a particular school were able to create this fabulous virtual graduation with all the bells and whistles, but another school might not have access to people who could do that or create that, then that would, would reflect poorly on them. And so they really thought about consistency and not reflect poorly on them as much as just they wanted to honor seniors equally and consistently across the district. And we understood that piece. But I think their concerns were more with safety and crowd management, no matter what we chose. And we did have principals who say, yes, we prefer an in-person option. But we do understand that this is a personal and community health crisis as well. And so they were willing to defer to our guidance.
Right, okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak.
Yeah, go ahead. I think that's Anna Barrett.
It is.
Yes.
First, I'd like to thank those of you who have worked on all these options. I know this is, this is, we put together, I know there are considerations, and I know a lot of time and effort has been put into this on top of all the effort that has been put into doing all the remote learning things that we've been doing. So I'm going to make a couple, I'm going to share a couple of thoughts, keeping in mind that my thoughts, there's nothing that I, I am in no way suggesting that we violate any sort of codes or orders or restrictions that have been placed on us by, you know, by the government, state, federal, local, whatnot. But I'm just going to give some feedback that I've gotten, and I'm not going to pretend that this isn't a particularly emotional topic. You all know I have a senior. But my concern for this goes far beyond my senior. I have spoken to quite a few, quite many seniors, actually, who are very concerned that a virtual graduation, what they keep referring to it as a fake graduation, that the parts of graduation that they value, and a lot of those you referenced early, are the collective celebration, the marching with the peers to pomp and circumstance, the collective turning of the tassels and those things. And they value those probably more, at least the seniors with whom I've spoken, value that more than a photo op, getting a diploma or going one by one to getting a diploma. They, like I said, keep referring to it as fake graduation. Quite a few of them said that they, you know, wouldn't be excited about participating in that. So I just wanted to share that. I'm a little frustrated, and I know this is an Irish issue, but, you know, that we have 300 people at Lowe's on Saturday, but we can't put together graduation. But, you know, I wonder a couple of things. Number one, given that delaying graduation was one of the lower ranked options on the survey or people's feedback, I wonder if they realized that their choice was between virtual, simply between virtual and delayed, if their responses would have been different. Nobody wants to delay graduation, but, but that result is inconsistent with what I'm hearing from my constituents. But that's just one, one constituency. You know, I don't know that people have a good understanding of what, what virtual is. And I've been looking around at what other districts are doing, and I, just as we got on this call, saw that there was a school district that was, now they're out of state, but they were doing sort of a collective senior video, but then also making plans for an in-person ceremony later in the summer. With that, understanding that, that there will be students who won't be able to attend, but that it seemed like that students really, really, really valued that opportunity to get together. So I personally would like to see if we can delay this, this choice, knowing that there's a lot to be done, to see, you know, if we, we are anticipating, I think, version restrictions will be reduced this weekend. And, you know, we may be in a vastly different place two weeks from now, four weeks from now, whatnot, than we are now. So I would, would certainly regret making a decision right now when we don't have all the facts. Now, having said that, we could be in a worse situation in a few weeks. We certainly hope not. But I, I just personally would like to do everything possible to preserve an in-person scenario with restrictions, with face masks, with hand sanitizer, and whatever we need to do. That is certainly what, what the people with whom I'm speaking feel very strongly about.
And when you say in-person, you mean communal, like this option, number one? Everybody together?
Yeah. Right. And understanding that for some of our larger high schools, that, that that may mean having to graduate students communally in groups, maybe that's 100 at a time, depending on what the current orders in place are. They understand that, but they would like, they would like the opportunity to have something in person, if possible. You know, understanding that it'll look different. I, I think they're all realistic, we are all realistic about the fact that it's going to look different than what it's looked like in previous years. And, and I think people are more than willing to make concessions, you know, like I said, face masks, hand sanitizing as people come in. I mean, you know, checking temperatures as people come in. I don't, I don't know what those things are, but I know that they'd rather graduate in groups of 100 than not graduate together.
Okay. Thank you, Anna Barrett. I have a note that Amy would like to speak next, and then we'll go to Tracy. Go ahead, Amy.
I was just gonna, okay, I was gonna add on to what Anna was saying. I don't have a dog in this fight, I don't have a senior, but I do have kids. And it's, it's hard not to take the emotion out of this and think about what these seniors are going through. And I totally agree. I think we should do everything possible to honor what our constituents want, and it's very obvious that a majority want a in-person, some type of graduation. Again, I'm agreeing with Anna, we don't need to violate any codes or anything like that. But I think maybe we should ask them again about the possibility of maybe doing something like she mentioned with videos or something, and then maybe having it later in June when more restrictions are lifted. But I really think that these seniors deserve the chance to have the communal graduation in any way we can. And I, I know, me personally, I'm willing to do whatever it takes, however many days it takes, to let these seniors have the graduation that they deserve. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Go ahead, Tracy.
Can I add one more?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just a fact, one thing about option two that we talked about that we didn't mention, and I think it helps to relieve some of the confusion about virtual graduation. So one option with option two is the live individual walk-through or drive-through graduation. In other words, some kind of walking through with you and your family in staggered, but also being able to take pictures of graduates and then putting that together for some kind of virtual option to be shown on graduation day. So that is, that is what would be like a hybrid, that individual experience of getting your diploma, walking across the stage. But also, one thing that we just didn't mention is that we would be able to, as a district, provide some kind of video for that. It would have to be limited, but it could be a hybrid option with number two.
Okay. Tracy?
I'd like to say that I, I do think it's important to consider maybe a variety of options for our students. One particular concern that I have is that we have a large population of medically fragile students, that we have to really think very keenly about equitable access and health and safety, regardless of whatever order is lifted, amount of kids that are allowed communally. I just think we really need to be keeping those kids in mind. They may need to have some other considerations or some special options for them. I really like the option of staggered schedules and, and having some control over that and having a very small amount of students and parents being allowed to enter the building to have a ceremony.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Comments?
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Let's go with Benji, and then we'll go back to Worth. Go ahead, Benji.
Madam Chair, this is Benji. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Benji.
Okay. Madam Chair, this is Benji Forrest. First of all, again, I'd like to commend everyone that's put these options together. We appreciate that so very much during these trying times. My idea is to, and from what I've heard from parents and other concerned citizens, is that they would like for it to be as much as possible, traditional like we've been having. And it looks like to me that if you're asking us our opinion about these four options, the one that would do that closest would be option one. And whereas live communal graduation with limitations, whatever those limitations would have to be, in order to meet the qualifications of what the governor's order is and those of the Department of Public Instruction. So I would go on record as saying that of those four options, option one looks like that would meet what we have tried to do and want to do and what the majority of those surveys say they would like. Option one looks like to me meets that the closest, and that's what I would be supporting, if, if we're limited to those four options.
Okay. Thank you. And Worth, did you have a follow-up?
And I think we've got to make sure that the emotional aspect is important. Well, the overall health of the students has got to be the number one priority, not only our students, but parents as well as faculty. Then from that point, I do believe that our students and parents, I think they'd like something live, and they would like something where there could be other students involved in their graduation. Now, we know that the governor's got these phases that we've got to get to in each phases for several weeks. And, you know, I think eventually it may be up to 50 or 100 or whatever he may set forth, but I think we must follow those guidelines, no matter how much. We would love to have a traditional graduation. I just think that's important. That's also setting, our, our community is also going to be looking at us on, on what we decide in regards to our graduations. But I do think students being able to have, like option, like you say, option one, but it's going to be with limitations, because I think we're going to have to follow through with the number of people that he would allow or our governor would allow, you know, to be together, well, whatever number that may be. But, you know, I just think it's, we've got to also maintain the safety and of our students and our faculty as well as the parents.
Madam Chair, I have another comment, if there's some.
Okay. Let's, is that Amy?
That's Anna Barrett. It's quick.
Go ahead, Anna Barrett, and then we're going to go to Mary, and then Caroline.
I would just urge us to all be creative as well. And again, to reiterate, I am in no way suggesting that we violate, we can't violate orders. So that's, that's off the table. But be creative with our resources. I, I don't even know if, if ECU would allow us, but things like, could we graduate, have our seniors in Minji's and their families spread out in Downey Ficklin, where they could, could, it could be projected onto the screens? I mean, obviously, we could never have the numbers of family that we typically have, but could we do something where at least the kids could be together and then livestream it to the families? You know, certainly the kids want that chance to celebrate with their families, but they're going to get to do that once it's over. It appears to me, again, from what I'm hearing, that their chief concern is getting to walk with their peers. And if that means livestreaming it to families and then letting them have individual family celebrations after, that, you know, could be a consideration. But we've got two large venues that I don't know if they're available, but if they are, would certainly provide ample opportunity to spread out if and when we're, the, the number of, of folks who can gather is, is a bigger number than, than what we're dealing with now.
Okay. Let's go to Mary. Yeah. Mary Williams.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, back during the Ice Age, when I graduated, when I graduated from Rose High School, we never graduated inside. We graduated outside. At, it's called Downey Ficklin now, but back in the day it was Ficklin Stadium. And like Worth and Benji said, and some of you all commented, that there may would be restrictions on the number of people that can gather, and we may want to consider having it outside. Or maybe we can collaborate with ECU to do it outside, because they have enough room on that football field to space people six feet apart. And plus, with the use of the Jumbotron that they have, I mean, it's something that we could consider. I don't know how many seats that the stadium holds, but I feel like it's enough to separate families, you know, multiple families from one another. So we might want to consider that. I don't know how you all feel about it or anything like that, but if, you know, the restrictions now, I don't know if it's 50 people, 100 people that's gathered, I think we may be able to use that and then, you know, stagger how many students we can get in. You see what I'm saying, during the hours that we need per individual high school.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And then Caroline was next.
Yeah. I'm basically in agreement with what everybody has said. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. There just been several times I've tried to speak and y'all couldn't hear, so, but I'm having internet problems at home. It sounds to me like there's beginning to be a consensus for outside, abiding by the governor's restrictions, whatever they are at the time of the ceremonies, as well as gathering at least groups of our graduates together. I, I agree that that's what seems to matter the most, is the graduates themselves having one last opportunity to be, to at least be in the same space together. No, they can't hug and they have to stay, stay six to 10 feet away from each other. But it seems to me we don't, at this point, have clarity on the use of any facility that might be large enough to actually put a graduating class or parts of a graduating class in one space properly, socially distanced. Because everything that was said by Jennifer is correct, we do have an obligation, not only to our community, but to, to our students and families and staff to keep everyone safe. So I, I guess I challenge us to come up with a way that honors the sort of last opportunity for our students to be together for class of 2020 and comply 100% with pandemic control orders of the governor.
Okay. And I think Jennifer had a follow-up to that.
Yep. Just a couple of facts for you for our larger high schools. We're talking about 500 graduates or so. So our principals did say that they need ample time to prepare for these options. And so if you ask them when they would want to know what our decision is, they would tell you yesterday. We have principals who, with large schools, who need a, something, this, this is not something that we can plan in a week or so. So we understand the dilemma here. We see it just as clearly as everyone else, the options and what's wanted versus what our boundaries are, which are the safety and equity and providing that dignified graduation within the limits of the rules. So, yeah, this is not going to be an easy decision for, for any of us, or, but we just wanted to present all of these to you.
Okay. And Dr. Lenker stepping up to the podium? Go ahead.
Just to follow up, just the, all those comments, we've kind of discussed, obviously. I've been working with ECU and having lots of conversations on Downey Ficklin and Minji's, working with their assistant athletic director, J.J. McLamb, trying to get some final direction from ECU when it's, if it's available, not if it's available June 5th and 6th, what we can actually do June 5th and 6th, there's also what's allowable by the governor and the state of North Carolina. We do know that we expect announcement tomorrow or the next day from the governor that hopefully will at least move us into phase one, which means we should be in phase two by the time the traditional graduation date is ready. So we have, I have discussed with ECU, Ms. Williams, you hit the, hit it exactly on the head. the head, a lot, a lot of you said the same thing, can we have the kids walking through Menjis and then the parents watching from the big screen? You know, obviously, with a 50,000-seat stadium, we can put 1,000 people in there and easily social distance, but the question is, is that even legal at that point? So we'll have to wait and see what we get out from the governor later, later this week. So we are looking at all those. We do know that we have looked at, can the high schools divide into groups of 100 kids at a time? Again, it'll come down to whether, what, what the governor, what's in place at that point. So we've heard to that. Also, Ms. Smith, also know your comments about if you actually said, if you want it live, do you actually have to wait? We purposely did not give any directions other than what your, what your choices are. But that could easily be, like you said, if they knew that was an if, if they wanted live, they had to wait, maybe they would, that might be a higher priority. We certainly understand that as well. We also know some of the smaller high schools, North Pitt, Farmville, and Aiden Grifton, could probably pull this off in their own football field, as Worth said, having it back at their own, at their own schools without a whole lot of difficulty. Again, if we're, if we can put 100 people together, but just wait and see.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Linker. Does anyone else have any follow-up comments? Anyone? Melinda, you haven't spoken yet, do you have any comments?
Well, as much as I know, it's a, it's a chance with outdoors, I just, I just envision myself looking at previous graduations, I don't see how in Menjis you could isolate or put six feet apart with the larger schools, even on the floor, because the larger schools are pretty packed there. Am I wrong?
The, the square foot of the floor is about 13,000 square feet. The, the three small high schools, you could actually sit them about eight feet apart, 64 square foot per kid, but would not work for the, for Rose, South Central. And there's nothing says they actually have to sit. You could march them through pomp and circumstance and do all that.
But, but I was saying, you know, if we could do it in Menjis and keep them apart, I don't.
The three big high schools could not pull that off and be eight feet apart or so.
Right, right.
Okay, any follow-up?
This is Amy, can I comment on this?
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
Um, the larger schools, I mean, if the time comes where we can actually even do this, couldn't we maybe divide the larger school just so they have the same experience? I mean, you could do like first half of the alphabet this day, second half of, I mean, depending again on how many people we can gather in one area, but that would still give them that life with peers in their class.
Yeah, good, good point. I think everything's on the table still, although we are starting to form a consensus. Anyone else?
Um, I, I just would like to say, I know none of us are really wanting to look at an option of delaying it far, but is there an option to delay a couple of weeks? I'm actually getting texts and emails from people who are listening to the meeting right now. Thank y'all for listening and caring. And I'm getting, I'm hearing from students who are, who are absolutely in agreement that they, you know, would be willing to put it off. I, I don't think anybody's wanting to put it off till August, although some people would be willing to do that, but definitely, you know, wanting to, to not make a decision any sooner than we absolutely have to, and willing to postpone for a couple of weeks if we need to do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there are no further comments on this, I don't, this is not something that we're gonna take action on tonight. I think Dr. Linker said that we are expecting the governor to give some sort of announcement of what's gonna happen if we go into the next phase shortly. I think the stay-at-home order is set to expire Thursday, I believe. So we should know something very quickly. I do hear what Jennifer's saying, that we do need to quickly develop some sort of path to move forward. And obviously, we've all sworn an oath to uphold the laws of the state of North Carolina, so we have an obligation to do so. So I guess at this point, everyone needs to really think about the options that are presented. Let's hear what the governor has to say, let Dr. Linker get some more follow-up from ECU, depending on what the governor says, if that's even an option. And then I suspect that we'll probably, if this is something that we really need to take some action on to give you guys some good direction, we may have to have a special called meeting. In fact, I would feel more, more comfortable doing a special called meeting perhaps next week, so that we can chart a path moving forward. Okay, so that's being, that being said, I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. And I guess I would just like to very quickly thank everyone once again for, especially the staff within Pitt County Schools for navigating this COVID-19. It feels very similar to driving down the road with, in the dark with no headlights. But thankfully, but thankfully, our leadership team is such that they're the people who have driven down the road so many times, they can do it with their eyes closed and certainly have very strong leadership. To all of my fellow board members, thank you once again for, I know you're all fielding phone calls, and it's a difficult time because we are navigating an area where we have more questions than we have answers. I know each one of you has stepped up to, to do different things, and I've mentioned that before, I know Benji this week sent some messages to our legislators about the SROs. So thank you to each of you. Thank you for being patient with me as I try to call the game from appearing in the booth with all the technical difficulties. To all the parents and family members at home who are trying to navigate this remote learning, be encouraged. We know it's coming to an end on May 22nd, right, Dr. Luster? So try to keep your kids engaged for just a few more weeks. I know myself, I've gotten a message from my son's teacher, he wasn't engaged like he should have been. So I, I, I feel, I feel the pain that all of, all of us, we're in this together. Also, just very quickly, thank you to our principals. Thank you to our PIO for putting together a celebration with their drive-through, and I think everyone got a T-shirt. So we're thankful for all of our principals, our school nutrition heroes that we celebrated this week, our school, we celebrate a lot of people. This is a, this is a big, big ship that we're driving here. But thank you again to our school nurses. And of course, we cannot forget that this is Teacher Appreciation Week. We appreciate all of our teachers. We know that this is a time that they have all had to step up way above probably where they ever thought they would have to be, and so, and they've done a fantastic job. So to our teachers, we thank you and we appreciate you, to everybody. We thank you and appreciate you. We are doing great, and we are Pitt County School Strong. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, this is Benji Forrest. I believe that we adjourn.
I have a motion from Benji Forrest. Do adjourn.
I second.
I have a second from Anna Barrett. I think we'll just, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned.